Good afternoon. I am Kim Melnick, Vice Chair of the School Board, just filling in for Carolyn Rye momentarily. The administrative, informal, and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at 4:00, 4:03, on this eighth day of February 2022. Pursuant to the School Board's 2021-22 reopening plan adopted August 10, 2021, and the School Board vote on August 24, 2021 regarding health protocols for school board meetings, it is determined that physical distancing will be used in school board chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Therefore, it will be designated public seating in school board chambers during the school board meeting. Members of the public will also be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on www.vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. It is the School Board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the formal session - school board meeting to begin at 6:00. At 5:30, the School Board will conclude its administrative, informal, and workshop session of the meeting unless the School Board votes to continue until 5:45 PM. The administrative, informal, and workshop session will conclude no later than 5:45 to allow the School Board and the school administration to prepare for the formal session of the school board meeting at 6:00. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Vice Chair Melnick. Present is Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. Moving on to A, the School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. And before we do that, I'd like to welcome Chief Nutigate, who was supposed to be part of our presentation later, but he has to leave. And so, welcome, Chief. Is there anything you'd like to...
Yes, ma'am. Thank you to the Chair, thank you to the Board, and I apologize for not being able to stay for what I know is going to be a wonderful presentation. You have some very important people that have put that together to talk about restorative justice and diversion in the schools. And what I just wanted to lend our voice and my voice to it is, this is completely 100% supported by the Police Department. It really aligns with our philosophy and our vision that we use enforcement as a tool when warranted, but many times there are other paths that we would like to take that we can actually get longer-term cessation of the conduct that we don't want. And I think what this also does, it aligns with the vision that we have with our school resource officers, that they're really there as a role model and a mentor and not an enforcer. And it really puts us in a good position as a school system and a police department for the City of Virginia Beach that when other school systems are pushing hard to remove SROs from the school, it lines up with what we want to accomplish with our officers, and that is not as enforcement first, and enforcement should be limited. And this really gives us another option, and we are 100% in support of the initiative, and I think we'll be very pleased with what our professional group has put together.
Thank you. That's an important preface to that presentation, and I thank you greatly.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to administrative matters. Mrs. Hughes.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the SBA. It had unfortunately never occurred to me before that dues are likely being paid on our behavs, and so I'm curious what those dues are and if there's an option to opt-in, opt-out. I feel like we have an organization that doesn't necessarily reflect the values of all board members, and so having dues paid to that organization might not be the best choice for everybody. So I would just like to know what that amount of dues is, how is it paid, when is it paid, and is there a process for opting out?
Well, I'm willing to explore with you, but are you referring to individual dues or the group dues, just so I understand?
Just individual. That would be a choice every board member should be able to make for themselves.
Because I don't know if we are paying the individual or a group rate, so we're happy to get back to you and the rest of the Board on that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Anybody else? All right then, and my apologies for my late arrival. Thank you, Mrs. Melnick. So we have an important workshop session ahead of us, and we will... Hello, Mr. Freeman. This is our COVID update.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. Dr. Saltner and I will be providing tonight's update. Dr. Brodadi is unable to join us, but our right-hand person, Lori Shaw, should be with us via Zoom and available to take your questions at the end of the brief. This is the most recent slide from Virginia Department of Health showing community transmission in Virginia Beach. As anticipated, we are seeing a substantial downward trend in community transmission. Virginia Beach is still in the high category of level of transmission with 388.5 new cases per 100,000 in the last seven days and a percent positivity of 21.8. Next to those numbers in gray, you can see what was reported at the last school board meeting. Over the last two weeks, the number of cases have reduced roughly 50% each week. It's a good trend. We see a similar trend in schools. Starting with the week of January 17th, we've seen about a 50% reduction in cases over the following two weeks, each week. You may be wondering about the effect of having unmasked students in our buildings. EO2 went into effect on January 24th. In the two weekly reporting periods since then, there were only seven total days when students were in schools. There were two days that were impacted by snow and one day that was a staff day. The data that we see at the end of this week will be a better reflection of results of having unmasked students in schools. Dr. Saltner will share more details about mask opt-out numbers. CDC, VDH, and Virginia Beach Department of Public Health continue to emphasize the importance of getting vaccinated. Here's the progress for this most recent round of vaccination clinics. All versions of the COVID vaccine booster are available at these clinics. Finally, I want to share some other updates. At the first meeting in January, in response to updated CDC guidelines, we indicated the intention to align the requirement to be boosted to be exempt from quarantine. Virginia Department of Health has since provided interim guidance as clarification. In very basic terms, students who have completed their primary series of vaccination, so that's two doses of the mRNA or one of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, followed by the two-week waiting period, will continue to be exempt from quarantine for the near future. A booster is not required. Adults, however, will need to be up to date on their COVID-19 vaccinations, which means that they will have received their primary vaccination series and have been boosted at the appropriate time after their primary series. In our plan, it takes effect on February 21st. As a reminder, those who have had COVID-19 within the last 90 days are also exempt from quarantine. Last week, we partnered with Virginia Beach Department of Public Health to host two webinars, one for staff and one for families. During those webinars, Dr. Brodadi shared the most current information from Virginia Department of Health and Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, including a shift in the focus of contact tracing from all cases to outbreaks. We've received KN95 masks, are in the process of distribution with the goal of having them to our staff by this coming Monday. Because these are considered respirators, our staff will need to sign a voluntary respirator use form prior to receiving a KN95 mask from the school division. We're also working on a distribution plan for our students. A judge has issued a temporary injunction on the enforcement of Executive Order II in the Arlington case. It is unclear how this applies to other school divisions. In the Chesapeake case, the Supreme Court has denied the motion, which means that the Chesapeake School Division can make its own determination regarding implementation of Senate Bill 1303. We know that this will be a discussion item, and Camille Lynetti can assist regarding legal implications during Q and A. As we continue to respond to the flurry of updates and guidance, and Executive Order II gets addressed through the legal process, it may be helpful to remember that on December 7th, we shared with you criteria for when we, as a school division, may want to consider transitioning to mask optional in specifically targeted populations. As with all mitigations, we take a data-driven approach to mitigations that we can control. With numbers coming back down, and with some of our population, high schools, for example, having relatively high vaccination rates, with a large number of students and staff who are now in the 90-day post-COVID window, we should keep this topic on our radar. It may also be helpful, as you think through the continuing legal process of Executive Order II, and what the implications will be for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. With that, I will now turn the brief over to Dr. Saltner.
Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Dr. Spence, members of the Board. During the first week of Executive Order II, all 86 schools and centers were visited by docile directors, the Chief of Staff, and our superintendent. A visual survey saw the greater majority masked, with those who were unmasked in the minority. What we saw affirmed the data presented herein, which is our parent opt-out, those who officially completed the form seen in the table which you're viewing. They account for 14% of our students unmasked, which I think proved a welcome relief for many of our teachers on the first few days after the executive order. Of course, this is an average. The number could be as high at 25% at a school, or as low at 2% at others. To be clear, this data reflects only those whose parents completed the opt-out. I'd be remiss if I did not report, as the day passes, at some schools, mask-wearing can wane, with some coming from PE or lunches dropping or relaxing the mask. I want to return to a topic that we have brought to you throughout the COVID update, and that is some of the challenges our schools are facing. Staffing challenges continue to be a concern, yet our issues with substitutes have been minimizing due to two factors: an increase in the number of substitutes hired since January 3, and a significant decrease in staff absences as the Omicron variant transmissions trend down. In the first chart seen here, one can see the declining trend of central support staff needed to reinforce schools with some unmanageable absences, and in short, keep schools open five days per week. Recall in our COVID update, plan for school closure, grade-level closure, or classroom closure, we referred to this level of support as a Tier 2 support, sending up to 50 central support staff to buildings. You'll see on January 14, the peak of COVID spread in our schools for our staff. A Tier 3 support was implemented, where we sent 67 staff to support our schools. I hope you'll also note, on February 2 and 3, no support was required for our schools, and that has been the case for every day. We've sent zero, with the exception of the past Friday, and today, where we sent only three staff members. Despite this declining need, central support remains poised five days weekly to support our schools and keep them open. We continue on a daily basis to monitor absences and to, both at the end of the day and early each morning, we're up looking at this. But what we have seen is about a 33% improvement in staff attendance from our high in January. Interestingly enough, and as an aside, our student attendance has also improved. The average attendance in January was 91.17%, and for February, the average daily attendance is up to 94.61 for those few days that we've been in school. In addition, I'd like you to know that Human Resources has been quite effective in their recruitment and incentive efforts to increase subs in the division. Since January 3, 105 additional subs have been hired and onboarded, and they're now working in our schools. And on the subject of successful recruitment, our Human Resources has also brought on 39 teachers and 65 classified staff, also seen on that second chart which you're looking at. However, I do want to point out that some of these gains have been canceled by resignations A survey to determine interest in Virtual Option identified 3,024 students, with 2,957 students whose parents expressed an interest in Virtual Virginia. Virtual Virginia does not offer an option for early childhood or pre-case students, prudent decision probably in light of student maturation and dependence at that age on face-to-face instruction. Since the survey administration, schools have been actively engaged in contacting all of these families. They are calling to determine if the interest still exists or remains. With about 50% of these families contacted, under 75 families or parents have opted to continue with the Virtual Virginia. The Office of Programs for Exceptional Children is working to determine services for the 316 special education students, many who can be served by Virtual Virginia, and others who will be served by Virginia Beach City Public Schools' own virtual program reserved for special education students whose services cannot be met by Virtual Virginia. Here's our timeline. I'll give you a minute to just glance at that. Ideally, all students who wish to continue with Virtual Virginia will be registered and in classes February 28. The chart shows, the chart above shows a timeline illustrating work since February 4th, including contact to all families. In addition, a webinar featuring Virtual Virginia staff was conducted last night, and you'll also see the intensive work which must be done to modify IEPs and 504s, which will continue through the 17th, in addition to addressing the specialized needs of our English language learners, gifted, and students who need reading support or PALS support. At our meeting February 22nd, we'll update you on these final numbers. I'd like to do is answer any questions that you may have regarding my COVID update and those updates provided by Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Dr. Saltner, and we'll start with Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you for that update. So I don't know how to begin with this. I want to remind everybody that the mask policy, it was, it's designed to be a parent choice, not a student choice. And so what I'm hearing from our teachers, and I'm hearing from a lot of them, I've had emails, I've had phone calls, I've even been stopped in the grocery store, and every one of the people that I've, teachers that I've spoken to feel that we have gone from enforced masking to the exact opposite end of the spectrum. Teachers are not allowed to say anything, even in a positive way. They can't even see Johnny when he's coming in the door and he's wearing a mask correctly. They can't even say, you know, "Thank you, Johnny, for wearing your mask correctly." They're being told, and this is what I've been told, that principals have interpreted this as, teachers don't say anything one way or the other. And it's basically because I think, as a system, we must be afraid, afraid of the hotline that's up there at the state level, afraid of parents who are, who don't want their children to wear masks might sue because they might interpret the teacher as giving a compliment for somebody wearing a mask correctly that maybe their particular child is not liked by the teacher. And I know it's a fine line that teachers have to do, but I think that teachers should not be silenced on this. If a teacher is compromised, you know, immunocompromised, or maybe someone in their family is immunocompromised, and they really, really like the fact that, you know, 90% of their students in their class are wearing a mask, and coming back from PE, the student takes their mask down and relaxes for a few minutes and then forgets to put it back up, teachers, especially on the elementary level, know who has opted out and who hasn't. And I just feel like it's a mistake to muzzle the teachers in this way. We have not just muzzled our teachers, we have wired their mouths shut because they can't see a word, not one way or the other. And I'm, I don't mean to be angry about this, but I am angry because I feel like our teachers should have the right to be able to say something in a positive way. They don't have to demean anybody for not wearing a mask. That's not the point. But the point I made when we first voted on this was this was a parent choice, not a student choice. And if a parent has not opted their student out of wearing a mask, then that student needs to be wearing a mask. And like I said, I can understand when they come back from PE, they want to relax, their breath is heavy, okay. But I do believe that teachers should have the right in their classroom, especially on the elementary level, where there are so many students who are not vaccinated. The teacher should have the right to be able to say something in a positive way, at least to students who are wearing their mask correctly, to be able to compliment somebody, or "thank you," or whatever, you know, "I appreciate that you're wearing your mask properly." Other kids, I know, I taught kindergarten for a long time and third grade for a long time, and I can tell you that if a student is supposed to be wearing a mask, that they will wear it properly. And if a parent gets upset that their child is not being complimented on, you know, because they don't have a mask on, then the teacher can find other ways to compliment that child, you know? "Thank you for walking correctly in line." "Thank you for, you know, for staying on task." There are other ways to give compliments. But I don't think our teachers should be fearful all the time, fearful of losing their job, fearful of having a bad evaluation, fearful of a parent who might send a note on the hotline, the state hotline, for something like this. This is just, it's just out of control, and we have gone to the opposite end of the spectrum on masks at this point. And I feel like we've really hurt our teachers, and we have taken a huge decision-making of their classroom out of their control. So I just have to get that off my chest. I want the public to know, and parents, if you're out there and you haven't signed an opt-out form, maybe you just need to remind your child every day that, you know, it's not their choice, it's your choice, it's for the good of your family that they're wearing the mask at school.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. It is definitely a topic that people feel very strongly about. There are a lot of passions on both sides.
Yes.
And because of those very passions, it is not fear that drove us to ask our teachers to stay out of this. It is protecting them and allowing them to focus on instruction. It is a highly politicized topic, and people are very passionate about such. We are looking, or our intent is to protect our teachers from undue criticism on either side of this issue.
Mrs. Melnick?
So, yes? I think the data speaks volumes that we gave people the choice, and only 14% of the school division decided to opt-in to that, to that choice. It's no secret, I've been a mentor at Green Run Elementary for seven years. I've shifted a little, I'm doing small group instruction in first grade for four classrooms a day. In my, the time I would have been in there as a mentor, I'm just better served right now helping kids, and I certainly am proud to do it because, as a former teacher, but also as, you know, a board member who's asking teachers to do this, I think it's important that I do what I'm asking others to do. But I will say, I'm really proud of Green Run Elementary, as I am of all of our schools, because the children wear masks, and I have not seen one child without a mask. They love their friends, they're very kind to each other, and I'm just proud of what I see in a building every day also. So I think that, I think quite frankly, that kindness spreads when you're in a building. And again, the data speaks volumes, that it's 14%. And I will tell you that today, in one of my groups, there was a little one who was not there yesterday, and I welcomed that child back today, and I was told that she had a really bad cough, and that's why she had been home the day before, and the child's ears were red, and I thought, "Oh, I hope, I hope you don't have a fever," is what I was thinking. But I'll tell you, as I was working in that small group, I thought, "Thank goodness we're both wearing masks." That's what I thought. So the debate can rage on about the efficacy of masks, but I'll tell you, at that moment, and for that 30-minute period of time, I was happy that we were both wearing masks. And I think that that's an important piece for our teachers, is that peace of mind also. I'm happy to see that the numbers are dropping. That makes me very happy. I don't want anyone to be sick, but we ask a lot of our teachers every day, and quite frankly, I'm living it with them right now, and I think, quite honestly, it's just the least that we can do for something that has an expiration date. And I thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick, and you are always a teacher. We're glad to see you in our schools, and I will point out that we know that our teachers need to have the best mask, and we are looking to begin distribution of KN95s on Monday for those who have an interest in wearing those masks.
And I thank you for that as well.
Okay, I'll go ahead with a Virtual Virginia question, and there might be others focused on this. Can you repeat, so of these 3,000 students, did you mention that at this point, Dr. Saltner, 50% of the families have been contacted? Did I understand that correctly?
Approximately 50%. I would not call Dr. Saltner to that.
Right. Ballpark.
Yeah.
And that you further said, so 50%, give or take, is 1,500, and of the 1,500, I heard you mentioned 700 or so, so...
No, ma'am. About 75 or fewer have indicated an interest to pursue.
Out of the 1,500 who were contacted?
That is correct. And we continue to make contact.
And this is the outcome of discussions with the counselor, kind of the cost and benefit, the benefit, but also the, what you might give up in the process, that that's what these, the nature of these conversations are?
That's correct, Ms. Rye. We are making personal phone calls so we can answer all those questions, explain what restrictions and limitations there are on Virtual Virginia, and the commitment that we ask any family to make, where the division is going to make an expenditure for them to be a part of the Virtual Virginia program.
All right, that answered my question.
Thank you.
So you're still, right now, entertaining questions from either you or Dr. Freeman? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So another, any, then I, okay. So then that leaves the legal matter, which you mentioned, Mrs. Lynetti, is available to speak to.
And...
Did I miss somebody? Oh, Ms. Owens? Well, I beg your pardon, let's put that on pause a moment.
All right, thank you. I have two questions. One, in regards to our opt-out numbers. Do you have any information that kind of indicates how many additional opt-out forms we're getting per day or per week? Obviously, we didn't, day one, have this number, just so that we know what our trend of increasing opt-outs is looking like?
This number was accurate as Friday, day's end.
Okay, so any idea about how that trended to there? If we got most of these, the first few, you know, the first day we opened it, are we going up 5% each day, and that's how we got here? Like, where is our number trending with these opt-outs?
We had immediate response, I think, from many parents. We had immediate response, I think, from many parents. We had a glitch in the availability of the access on what was to be the final day. We sent a communication to all families indicating that we would extend that deadline because of some reporting, or experiencing issues with access. That second level of communication did bring about a flurry of responses. But since then, very little movement daily.
Okay. And you said extending the deadline. Is there a deadline to opt out, or can parents just continue to opt out throughout the year?
We had asked that they complete that. I'm not sure of the exact date. I would say it was last Thursday. And perhaps we extended it to Friday. Don't hold me to that. And certainly, if a parent were to contact the school, we would allow them to continue to do that opt-out. We were looking to get the bulk of our responses and know what it was we were dealing with and how to address it.
Okay. The other, I guess, well, is it possible that if we're going to continue with the opting out, that we can continue to have updates on those opt-out numbers? So that we can see, is this our fourteen percent, kind of where we are, where we're at? Or are we seeing a kind of weekly or bi-weekly increase?
It's my intent to bring this in our COVID update on February twenty-second, if that's sufficient.
Okay.
Yep, that would be helpful. And then in regards to our Virtual Virginia, I don't know that, that I think it's a good thing, per se, or a bad thing. I don't know that I would put a judgment on the fact that we only have seventy-five families who've opted for Virtual Virginia. When we are looking at the options that we're giving families with Virtual Virginia and letting them know, we understand, we asked you to make a decision at the beginning of this school year about what was going to be safest for your family, based on these mitigations that we said we were going to do throughout the year. Families made a decision, and now we have changed it. And our option to them is, if you would like to change and do virtual, your child will lose all involvement with whatever academy programs that they have earned. They will lose some of their possibly extracurriculars, if they're doing marching band, if they're doing classes that are associated with other programs. They're going to go in when a semester has already started, so they're going to start into their Virtual Virginia classes later than those peers. And all of the classes that they're currently taking may not be offered. And so I know we've seen emails from parents who are saying, two of the classes my child is in are not going to be offered. He's going to lose those credits, and our other option is going to be summer school now, try and fix those things. And so I think when we're looking at, yes, seventy-five families have chosen to continue to move forward with Virtual Virginia, we're really giving a almost impossible option to some families. I don't think it's something, it's not something that I am proud of. I understand that we have limited options at this point, because we're switching at this point. And so it wasn't something that was planned in advance for, and our students are the ones who lose when we do that. But to say that we end up here with whatever that ending number is, if we had three thousand families that were interested in that, and we end up with seventy-five less than a hundred, maybe, maybe the problem is what we are offering, if they were that concerned to express that interest. And I just think it's something that we should be mindful of. That this is the situation that the board created, based on what we told parents in the beginning, that we would be committed to, and where we are now. It's not something I'm proud of, it's where we are. And I guess we'll see what those final numbers look like. Thank you.
Understood.
Can you speak to Dr. Saltner? I agree with you, Ms. Owens, about it being, and I would say, an imperfect option. But these were the same constraints that the parents had who enrolled back in August, right?
You are correct, Ms. Rye.
Which is why we told them we were going to have these mitigations to make a decision back in August. I mean, I think that's important when we say that.
So, okay, yes, to provide that context. Understood. Okay, then I guess we'll ask Mrs. Lanetti to come forward. Thank you. And you're still sticking around, right?
You bet. I got a calendar presentation.
Some of these things may overlap. They, each segment overlaps with the other. Welcome, Mrs. Lanetti.
Good evening, school board members. There's been a lot going on legally this week and last week going on. First, on Friday, the case in Arlington Circuit Court that was filed by seven of the school districts in Virginia seeking to have a temporary injunction to enjoin Executive Order Two was heard by the Circuit Court on Wednesday. The Circuit Court issued an opinion in Arlington, and it was a temporary injunction opinion. And that is a temporary motion until the judge has an opportunity to have a later hearing on it. There are certain elements you go through with the temporary injunction in this, but what the judge did decide that she would grant the temporary injunction and with the school districts involved in it at the moment, that says that Executive Order Two cannot be enforced right now in those school districts. There's another order that we're expecting from the judge, so we're not sure at this time if that order will limit it to the seven school districts involved, or it will be a statewide injunction on the enforcement of Executive Order Two. Interesting in the language, in the case of Arlington, the court was very clear that she did not believe that the executive order could override a school division's discretion and how the school division implemented SB thirteen oh three, or Chapter four fifty-six. And that was an interesting opinion putting out there. We're not quite sure where that's going. What happened next was the Chesapeake case, and we mentioned to you, the Chesapeake case was a case in which certain parents in Chesapeake sued the Chesapeake School Board, a number of other parties, the superintendent, and went directly to the Supreme Court of Virginia. It was a different legal vehicle to doing, a different avenue of going about it. In that case, they were seeking to have what was known as a writ of prohibition, or writ of mandamus, basically ordering the school division to follow what they believed was the appropriate law at the time. A very unusual motion. I've talked with you before about that, why that most of the school divisions chose not to get involved in that lawsuit because there were some procedural issues with it, and we didn't think, when talking about it, most of us thought that was not the best and quickest way to get the matter resolved. The court actually issued an opinion on Monday. Interesting in that opinion, the court did not reach as to whether the executive order was legal or not. What the court said was, one, that you don't have the ability to tell the Chesapeake School Board how it interprets Senate Bill thirteen oh three. Also, the language goes on to talk about whether the Executive Order Two is legal or not. The school boards have the ability to determine how they're going to implement SB thirteen oh three, and that means they can choose what elements of the CDC recommendations the school board thinks appropriate for its school division. So the Supreme Court said, you don't need to get to the issue of whether Executive Order Two is legitimate or not. You school boards have the right to do that. But this particular case dealt with whether the Supreme Court could issue an order to the Chesapeake School Board. And what it said is, no, you cannot, we cannot issue this order that you're asking the Chesapeake School Board to enforce what you determine is the appropriate law. So that kind of leaves Chesapeake out there. It's limited to Chesapeake, but the language in that is very interesting from the Supreme Court because it's foreshadowing what the Supreme Court is suggesting to you is going to be, the Supreme Court's probably possible ruling on it. Now, again, none of these cases are evidentiary cases at this point. They're argument cases, so should they work their way up in the system? There might be another decision that comes out. But now you have two opinions. You have the Chesapeake case, which was the Supreme Court's determination that school boards have the right to make their own interpretation of SB thirteen oh three. You have Arlington Court saying, we don't believe, the Arlington Court typically says, we don't, she doesn't believe that executive orders can override what discretion is granted by the General Assembly to school boards to interpret thirteen oh three. So we're in an interesting stage right now. I have not heard if the next order's coming out, or if there'll be further hearings on it. I am also aware that there are other lawsuits that are being filed relative to the mask issue. But that leaves you in an interesting position right now as to where you are. Two courts right now have basically said, school boards, you're going to have the right to make your determinations as to what you see as appropriate. I do expect that there will be changes in some of these orders. Can't tell you when those are going to happen, but interesting developments in the last week. Can I ask, answer any questions?
Oh, I'm sure there are. Can I go back for everybody's benefit to clarify? With the Arlington case, now I have to stop and think. So, right, so you, so the temporary injunction, can you make it clear to us and the public, who does the temporary injunction apply to?
We're not quite sure yet, because the judge's order that she wrote on Friday directed the attorneys who handled the case to prepare another order finalized in that and to circulate it. We have not seen that yet, so we're not clear that it actually applies statewide to enjoin any enforcement of the executive order or not. So we're waiting for that determination to come down. I've not had any clarification from the school districts that are involved in this particular case yet. So my advice to you this time is, I can't tell you that it applies to you yet. And so you proceed as though it's not actually applying to you at the moment.
All right. And before we open it up, one more follow-up to that. Is there any projected timeline in terms of historically or with regard to this, when this temporary injunction would become a final one?
Well, what has to happen next is they set a hearing, because what actually happened was they asked for a declaratory judgment. Please, courts, please solve this area of the law for us. But to get to that, they said, before we get to that, which is a longer process to get to, please stay this proceeding. We felt, the school districts felt it was important enough to ask the court, please don't require us to enforce Executive Order Two because we don't think it applies. The judge agreed at this time that that does not have to, you do not have to follow Executive Order Two, and there will probably be another hearing. And then in evidentiary hearing, you might get into more of the elements as to what the law says and where you're going. I will note that both courts went to unusual lengths to add extra language about this, recognizing how important it is. So that's an interesting fact, that I've got two courts, are basically different types of cases, but are basically saying that school districts, you've been granted the right to make the decision as to what's appropriate for your school division. I expect that you'll probably see further opinions on that, but that's just not the stage in there. So what would normally happen with the temporary injunction stage, once it orders out, they will then go schedule dates for hearings, there's briefings, other things that will happen. That's not as urgent for them at the moment because they have the temporary injunction that they asked for. So that could take a couple of weeks sometimes to get that resolved.
Okay, Ms. Owens?
Thank you. Sounds like, from what you are saying thus far, and there will be more developments, that thus far, the common message that we are hearing is that school boards have the right to make their own decisions in regards to their district. At the time that this school board voted to change their plan, the overwhelming comment that I was hearing was that, we're doing this because we don't have a choice. We're doing it because we have to follow this rule and we don't have a choice. If we have a right to make our own decision, and my understanding even from looking back at that meeting and comments from administration, was we don't have a choice. We are moving according to the executive order because we don't have a choice. We felt like the plan that we had in place that had directive for step-down for mitigations slowly and safely and in cooperation with our local health department was an appropriate plan. But we were recommending something else because we didn't have a choice. So I guess my question, yes, to Dr. Spence and my colleagues, is now that it appears, courts are saying, school boards have the right to make decisions for their district, do you still believe that the choice is what's best for our students? Looked at those Virtual Virginia numbers, we've heard from them. I'd like to hear where people stand.
Ms. Owens, I just want to clarify, they are not final orders. This is what we call dicta. This is language within the order. So I can't tell you that the final language will say that. But this is very strong language, it's in both orders.
Understood. And I understood that it's a conversation on the, the hot.
Mrs. Hughes?
So as far as who this injunction applies to, it's my understanding that it applies to the seven school districts that were parties to the case, which would be Arlington, Alexandria, Hampton, Richmond, Prince William, Fairfax, and Falls Church. Much like, as we've been discussing, the whole election, you know, redistricting, that applied to the parties. It applied to city council, but not school board. We're just kind of collateral because of something else. I am happy to see the Chesapeake suit went away. I looked at, we have seventy of a hundred thirty-one school districts that are defying the executive order. I'm sure they all followed Norman Oliver's order, but they're defying this one. So with those numbers, we're looking at slightly over half. It's about half and half what we're doing here. And, you know, I have to say, I did not vote to, use Ms. Anderson's word, to unmuzzle children because I thought that's what the law told me I had to do. I voted that way because I think it's the right thing to do. Something that I think would be wrong is to tell parents, you can choose whether or not to have your children wear masks, and then sit here based on an injunction that doesn't apply to this district currently, to say, no, put them back on, only to have potentially a month from now to find out that they take them off and just keep going back and forth. I just do not see that as beneficial.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin?
Thank you. I put it together just as some thoughts, considering the temporary injunction came out. My personal feeling is that we just cannot base our decisions on the political ping pong that happens out there. Even with our very concise statement that we made about the federal guideline to mask on a bus when we voted on Option C, we still received an email from a parent about a bus driver making students wear a mask. We said specifically that we were masking kids due to the federal guideline on the buses, but yet a parent still had sent something about questioning that, whether the child needed to wear a mask. So I feel like it would be very confusing if we continually change bi-weekly or whenever they decide to make different decisions, whether we mask or provide Option C every time the wind shifts in the court. The appeals are not completed yet, and the focus needs to be on education. We made decisions based on the information we had at the time to vote for Option C. Parents decided whether or not they would now choose to go virtual because of that decision. And we're about to, and we set aside millions of dollars to work with Virtual Virginia to make that happen for those students. In my opinion, we charted a course of action based on that decision, and we should stick to it unless it gets to the point where closing down the division is halted, and education is halted. With the decreasing numbers that we received from Oswalla, I don't see that that has happened at the point. It does look like the numbers are decreasing. Many states are already unmasked, and now more are coming, including Connecticut, New Jersey, Oregon, and Delaware. It seems like the tide is turning throughout the country. So for us to continue to go back and forth on this masking issue seems a little pre, you know, it seems disruptive to our division. I do feel like some of the reasons that the teachers are, you know, only fourteen percent of the teachers, or fourteen percent of the families had chosen to unmask or choose Option C. So I think that that was a much lower number, perhaps than we expected, which is a relief, again, as Dr. Saltner said, to many teachers and families. And perhaps that could be part of the reason why there are fewer families that are deciding to choose the Virtual Virginia option. I agree that it's not, you know, the best case scenario. But I do feel like the flip-flopping is disruptive to families, it's disruptive to teachers, it's disruptive to administration, who has to constantly make decisions to go back and forth. And I think not only disruptive, it gets to be very confusing for everyone involved. So I'm going to ask that we just stay the course for right now and see what happens with the rest of the court action. And in time, I think that we're going to, I mean, the numbers are looking great. I'm so pleased that they're half of what they were, you know, that we've received from the last meeting. So I think right now, I'm going to ask that we stay the course and just continue to see what happens to the numbers and what happens to the decisions that are made in the court. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning, and then Mrs. Williams.
Yeah, so I'm reading from the Supreme Court opinion, and the Supreme Court has indicated that SB thirteen oh three does not mandate masking, which is something that this board has been pointing to. So I just want to make that clear. SB thirteen oh three does not mandate masking. Another thing that I think we're forgetting is, the Virginia Department of Health has come out and said that masking can be harmful to children. That's not something that the board's been talking about, but the- but the Virginia Department of Health has made it very clear that masking can be harmful to children. So, um, I think, um, we need to, to consider that when we're trying to tell parents that they can't have the decision to unmask their children when the Virginia Department of Health says that it can be harmful. I want to also, I'm, I'm not sure if everyone is aware that a bipartisan bill was just passed out of a senate, um, committee that state, that, um, gives parents, uh, the right to choose. I think that's something that's going to be pushed very hard. I think it's, um, gonna, gonna definitely pass the legislature and be signed by the governor. Um, so that's something that we have to consider as well. I agree with Ms. Franklin, um, that we can't keep going back and forth. It's, it's going to be confusing to our children. And I also think that it would be harmful, um, to children to continue, um, masking them when it does harm their learning. Thank you.
Mrs. Weems.
Excuse me, yes, I totally agree with what Ms. Franklin said earlier that, that we, we just can't be playing this ping pong game. We get, we get the anxiety, the community sew up after a vote, you know, depending on where you land on it, both sides, um, passionate, a lot of anxiety. And then we threaten to revisit it, and then we get everybody down here last week because of a threat to revisit it and revote, and then that doesn't happen. Now, we've got this and a threat to revisit it. And then we're gonna, something else is gonna come up next week. Kami's gonna have new information, and then we're gonna be back down here with fifty or sixty, you know, people, you know, depending on, on their level of, of anxiety or their level of fear that, you know, we're gonna change. And then, and then if we change, then, then another week when Kami says something, we're gonna then come back here and change again. And so, I, that is just so disruptive. We need to get back to education. The numbers are, are trending so far down. Like Ms. Franklin said, we've got complete states going mask optional to schools. And these states, you know, um, are not usual states that you would, you would think that would go this way. Um, we've got our substitute situation, according to, to Dr. Saltner, pretty good. We've hired subs, um, haven't needed them much last few days. Our absences have decreased for both staff and students. So, please, let's, um, let's get the anxiety levels down. Let's not come in here every Tuesday and spend three and four hours, um, talking about it. Let's stay the course and, um, and, and keep watching these numbers go down and down and down. Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson.
Uh, back to my first rant that I had a while ago. So, I'd like to know legally, legally, what would happen if a teacher says to a student, and maybe Dr. Spence can answer this. I'm not sure if this is a legal question or if this is just an administrative question. What can teachers say? What can they say? And can they be fired? If they say something to a student about, you know, putting their mask on because their parent has not opted them out, can they be fired for that?
It depends on the plan that you have in place.
We don't seem to have a plan. Here's where we are, masks are optional.
Right, and so, that's, and I say, it's what you direct, I think, at this point. You as a school division define what's appropriate in the direction you've given your staff. What you do have a problem with is individual personal opinions that are inconsistent with what the school division or the school board has put out as a plan. That may be what they're not authorized to do. After, I'd have to turn it over to the superintendent, but again, they are still your employees and they're obligated to implement the plans as you have determined is appropriate for the school division.
You know, um, first of all, Ms. Anderson, you know as well as I knew that the board has, the board and the school division have a very high standard for termination for employees. And that we're not just firing teachers left and right. And despite all of the threats and people saying there's threats of this and that, it doesn't happen that way. You know that, you've been on the board a long time, it just doesn't happen that way. Um, and so, you know, I mean, if teachers are having conversations with students and they're appropriate conversations that are not in violation of school board policies, they're not going to be in a position to either receive a negative evaluation or be fired. That's just not a reality. What we have said is we're trying to keep teachers out of the middle of a political fight. And if anybody wants to argue with me that is this a political fight, we can, we can have that conversation after the meeting. But this is a political fight and we're trying to keep our teachers out of the middle of it because our teachers don't need to be in the middle of it. Our teachers need to be able to build and establish relationships with the young people they work with every day and with their parents who they work with every day. I got three emails from one of my kid's teachers today, so I know our teachers work with our parents every day. And they don't need this distraction. I understand there are some who are concerned. What we have said, which wasn't mentioned, and I don't know who these, what these concerns directly are because I, they haven't been shared with me, is if you, if you have a child that you think is supposed to be wearing a mask and you're concerned they're not wearing a mask, you have a principal who can address that for you. And you need to go to your principal and you need to say, I've got this kid. I know he's supposed to be wearing one, he just every day refuses. And I need you to address that with him and the parents. And the principals and assistant principals and administrators in our buildings can do that. And we've asked our teachers to go to your administrator if you have a specific concern so that they can stay out of it and our administrators can handle it. Our intention is to help our teachers stay focused on instruction. It isn't to be punitive, it isn't to muzzle anybody. It is purely to help them stay out of what has been a contentious debate in our community and across the country and not have that debate come into their classrooms either from the students or from the students' parents. That is it, I mean, that is, that is the reason for our asking them not to address it that way and to go to your administrator if you have a specific concern. Of course, no teacher is gonna have, get fired for saying, hey, nice job wearing your mask today. That's not gonna happen. The question that teacher needs to be thinking about is, is that helping or hurting in the establishment of relationships in the classroom? Because that is the most important thing that we can do to establish the conditions for learning or to build strong relationships in our classrooms. That's the, where the professional judgment of the teacher has to come in.
Thank you, that helps, that helps a little, it helps a little bit because I think, you know, from, from what I've been told, that they're afraid to say anything. But knowing that there's not, that, that the reason for not being able to say anything right now or saying a lot about it is, is to keep them out of the middle of it. And so, I think that was a good explanation and I hope principals and teachers are listening. Thank you.
Mrs. Weems.
Um, yes, yes, Dr. Spence, thank you, thank you for that. Um, and, and I know, I just wanted to add, you know, when I'm hearing this conversation that, yes, this is political, but for a third or fourth grader, it's not. They go to school and if their parent has said, you don't have to wear a mask, they're not thinking about politics, they're just saying, thinking, this is what my parent has, and I, because some, I guess, do give, get some input from their smaller children, but this is what my parent thinks is best for me. They're not looking at the politics. So, the only problem I have with, with the, you know, that, that I'm glad that teachers, I'm glad that you've said, just teachers stay out of it. Because, you know, a teacher, you know, complimenting people, you know, I would hope that it wouldn't get to the place of, I'm, I'm so, I'm so proud of y'all for wearing your mask. I'm so proud of you for wearing your mask. This is great that we're, you know, you know, almost everybody in the class is wearing a mask. I mean, you know, just like you were proud of your school because everybody had a mask. Well, to the one student or two or five in that classroom, then, oh, is the teacher not proud of this school? Or is the teacher not proud of this class because half of us aren't wearing a mask? Or five of us aren't wearing a mask, or I'm the only one? You know, so it can go both ways, you know, because I, so we need to, I, I love the fact that the teacher's just out of it, the teacher's there to teach. And this is a personal decision for families and parents. And, um, and so, we need to keep it that way and we need to just be proud of everybody. You know, proud that your parent made the decision and you're not wearing a mask and that you feel fine with that, you know, but, but better just stay out of it because either way, it goes both ways, uh, of discrimination and, and, and talking down to someone, not, not intentionally, but, um, saying things that, that will give those who are not wearing a mask the indication that they are less than or that they are looked down upon or that they're getting fingers pointed at them for causing other people to get sick. And we just don't need that, we need education in the schools. And so, Dr. Spence, thank you, I think that's a very wise decision, um, that, that we just keep the teachers out of it. And again, if there's a problem, you go to the principal and the principal can make that phone call home. But it's not appropriate in the classroom.
Mrs. Malnick.
I just, I just want to clarify, I'm not in a classroom with any student that does not wear a mask. So, that was my comment to my own people that everybody's wearing a mask in the classrooms in which I teach. However, I will speak for teachers and say there isn't a teacher that's going to do what, what you just did, which was... Said what? I'm proud of them for being kind, that's what I said. I'm proud of those kids for being kind. I'm proud of them for wearing their masks, those that do. I haven't seen anybody at Green Run who doesn't wear a mask. Maybe there are, I work in first grade, that's what I said. Um, but please let's not speak for teachers and, and say that they're possibly putting other children down or making other children feel badly. I mean, I can tell you the amount of time that I spend at that school, there's no time for that. It's, it is full-on, full-throttle education and really, we're really, they're very busy. And so, I just ask this board to be fair to our teachers and our administrators. And, um, it's not, um, that, that's, that's all, this is, this is tough, this is tough. And it's very easy to really step back. If you remove yourself, you can step back and really see both sides. And the fact again, that, that we're faced with other legal battles, um, comments on Facebook, if I, if I, if I read one more time, oh, well, we won, we lost the battle, but we haven't lost the war. I mean, just stop. Find, find something positive to do in the school division, just please, and support your teachers because they work so hard and this is very difficult for them. It's very, very difficult for them, especially since they don't have the choice whether or not they can wear a mask. Dolly, um, prevents that. And so, please find it in your heart to, to just stop and be kind to our employees.
So, to reiterate, the, the one ruling was Friday, like five o'clock at the end of business day. And then we had the weekend, and then today, we, yesterday was the second ruling. And, and so, the, the staff has only back, been back together for two days. Uh, Dr. Spence, you and your team, as you've discussed these develop, these daily developments over the course of the past forty-eight hours and I'm excluding the weekend, what, as superintendent, where, where do you see this at this point?
So, um, well, let me, let me just say this, I'll reiterate that our last recommendation to you was based on the executive order, wasn't based on our belief on whether or not masking was appropriate. I'd, I'd lean into the same here. I don't think you have yet a legal conclusion that applies to the school division. I think you, I tend to agree with the comments of, of bouncing back and forth. And I think it's challenging for administrators and teachers and I think it's challenging for parents and for kids. And I, I think, knowing that is unresolved, but will be likely resolved in the next few weeks, I, I would encourage the board to think about waiting, to do anything until that's resolved.
Thank you, Mrs. Weems and Mrs. Hughes.
I mean, yes, I've got some questions for, I, I think it, Mr. Freeman. It's so...
And, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to interrupt, just really quick, I just want to time check. We do have some guests here to, for the second presentation for the workshop. And I'm wondering if we might be able, and perhaps after Mrs. Weems' question, to move on and if we need to come back, we can come back after the meeting, if you're all okay with that.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yes, ma'am.
That, that's...
That's why I'm jumping in.
Would you like me to wait?
No, please, finish up.
So, how many weeks do we kind of like look at the data and then we go to the next, like mitigation step to maybe ease up on? Can you refresh me on that, how many weeks?
So, I think what you're getting at is once we implement a change, we monitor it for three weeks.
Okay, so this will be our third week since we made the optional mask, is that correct?
I follow exactly where you're going. I'm very cautious of committing to anything in front of this group, uh, to make sure I've thought through it.
Okay, well, okay, so three weeks, I guess...
So, so yes...
I totally understand that.
So, to your, let me think through this as you go. So, we implement a change, so in a database approach, we implement a change and then we monitor the data for three weeks. And in the, um, the way that we've been able to manage our, our programs since the beginning of the year is we're able to make one change that we're then able to see specifically what that change resulted in. In this case, I don't think we clearly have one change, um, in relation to risk. And what I mean by that is we've now incorporated, uh, five days of quarantine, followed by six days, day six through ten of, uh, masking in schools. So, I don't know how significant that is, but that is a, an element to the three-week waiting period is we normally make one, we make one change, monitor for that for three weeks and then make the subsequent change.
Okay, because my next question was gonna be, in your opinion, what would be, is, is there any timeline that you're gonna look at this again and come back with us with perhaps easing up on some things that we've, we've been getting emails about, um, you know, the after-school activities, that parents don't quite understand how their child can have an optional mask and not wear a mask all day and then five minutes later be in another room in the school with the same students but have to put on a mask. I mean, you just, and, and then our athletic testing, you know, those levels. Do you have any timeline for that?
May I, may I suggest, because this does sound like another line of questioning, that we add a plate, that we add a workshop, uh, that we extend this...
That's perfect.
At the end of the formal meeting.
And with that, I'm happy to come back and talk about all those things when the times are...
Okay.
May I suggest, maybe we, we might want to add information...
Please speak up, I'm sorry.
May I suggest, maybe we want to add information to the regular meeting? As, as it is information to the regular meeting?
Uh, well, it's that or, or the workshop, the one requires that the time of agenda adoption. So, everybody give that thought when we break, one way or the other, we'll continue the discussion, okay? All right then, I'm happy to introduce our, our next presentation. And, uh, welcome, Dr. Parrott, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Rye. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Malnick, school board members, Dr. Spence and our viewing public. I'm LaKees Parrott, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And this evening, I have the pleasure, I'm joined by two of our city colleagues, Deputy Chief Bill Dean and the Director of the Court Service Unit, Olympia Perkins. And we are here to share information about a collaborative effort to implement restorative practices as an alternative accountability program to date. So, it is my extreme pleasure to represent my friend and our city colleague, Deputy Chief Dean.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, Dr. Parrott, and Chair, and Vice Chair, Board Members. Dr. Spence, it's a pleasure to be here, share with you a, uh, little bit of a briefing on something that we've been working on since, uh, late last year. So, if you'll give me a few minutes, I'll work through the PowerPoint and we'll have any questions that you might have.
And we'll just ask you to speak up if you would be kind enough to, for the benefit of our viewing public, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, to give you the short version of the history of our considerations here, we began in earnest, uh, late last year to discuss the possibility of establishing a restorative justice program in the city and emulating that in the schools as well. Comes to find out, there already is some language in school policies about this. So, really what we're trying to do is, uh, look at a program that would expand to, uh, using restorative justice, uh, that exists in the schools in the form of a mediation program, which is a part of a restorative justice strategy, uh, and extending that in, out into the community as an option for the juvenile justice system and our police officers, uh, who are, uh... and our police officers, who are engaging juvenile offenders over minor criminal offenses. So, we have briefed the senior staff late last year on the matter, and had very productive discussions there. We've provided updates to the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney, who as you may know is the Chief Law Enforcement Officer in the City of Virginia Beach. So, we have, uh, some consideration and some, uh, some support there from Mr. Stoll. And, uh, we are, uh, providing the update to the Court Service Unit. We have an ongoing relationship with the Court Service Unit and the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Program that's existed in the city here since two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight timeframe. And this project really is a culmination of a lot of work in a lot of different areas, as the city works to, uh, refine our practices around enforcing the law, and, uh, and now the school code of conduct as it relates to our young people in the community. So, to give you an overview of what we'll talk about here, very briefly, is we'll define what restorative justice is for you, the goals of the program, the what of the program, the why, some funding sources that have been established already in support of the program, a little bit of background on programs that are similar in nature, some of our training strategies as we consider how to proceed forward with establishing trained folks to execute the restorative justice facilitation process, next steps for our work, and some questions and answers. So, to start with the bottom line up front for us, we thought it would make sense for you to look at this from a police perspective. When a child commits a criminal offense in Virginia Beach, the police have three possible dispositions to deploy. The first is to warn and release the child to a parent or guardian. That's a pretty narrow, uh, a pretty narrow response, we think. It is a pre-arrest diversion, or a pre-arrest warning, basically. So, that is just to take the child back to mom and dad, or the guardian, and say, here's what we've observed, here's what we've documented, we now return the child to you. The second is a court diversion program, that's a post-arrest, so we'll actually make the arrest, and the arrest will go into the court management system, child will have an arrest record, and then participate in a post-arrest diversion program. These programs are successful in redirecting behavior, they have good success rates, but there is that arrest record that lingers beyond. And then the third is a petition or a summons to court, and that obviously is a post-arrest measure, and there's a court hearing that follows those. So, what we propose would be a fourth option, that creates a, another, a second pre-arrest alternative, one that holds the child accountable and provides understanding of the impact of their behaviors in a developmentally appropriate way. And, uh, we find from our research from other areas of the country, that these are pretty effective programs, and I'll share a little bit of that for you. Restorative justice is an approach towards achieving justice that, to the best extreme, or the best extent possible, involves all the stakeholders involved in a crime to address the harms, needs, and obligations arising from the crime by putting the right, by putting right and enabling healing to the greatest extent possible. Restorative justice focuses on what happens, as opposed to what rules were broken. It focuses on who is harmed versus who broke the rules, and who is responsible for repairing the harm versus how do we punish the person who's committed the offense. The goal here is accountability for harmful actions that is communicated to the parties in a setting and a manner that brings understanding to adolescents as to the impact of their actions. So, we find that this is a, again, a developmentally appropriate approach to communicating and having a conversation about the impact of actions. Our goals, and I should stop now and say that what you'll see pretty much from here on is where we think we are going to go, these are things that we see in other programs that we like. But we've expanded our committee of three, Dr. Parrott, Ms. Perkins, and I, recently to a larger group. I'll share with you who's on the larger group, a very enthusiastic group, I think, that's now working on this. These goals may change, but generally, we're looking at accountability, those who break the rules must be held accountable. School and community safety, certainly the reason that we exist in the Police Department, and then character development, which we should be a solid partner on. We do that by repairing harm, providing support for victims. And I'll stop and say that this is a very well-received practice amongst those who are the victims of criminal acts, or the recipients of harm. The feedback that we see on these matters from across our surveys is that, uh, the victims have a much better experience here than they do in a more formal setting. It just makes more sense to them to be in that, uh, conversation. So, to reduce recidivism is always our goal, to reduce risk factors for children, and to create incident-specific responses. The what is, this is a pre-arrest diversion program. Police will respond to criminal matters, report and refer the crimes that we, that we document. Incident reports are not shared officially outside of the Police Department, and are not entered into the Department of Juvenile Justice Records Management System. And that's what makes it a pre-arrest program. That official record with the court does not get entered, so that the child can say reasonably after the completion of a program, or the warning release, that there is no arrest record. However, there's a pretty successful, we believe, chance at a good intervention. All police reports are deet, are deleted once a child reaches the age of twenty-four, that's a matter of records retention laws with the Police Department. The why is to afford juvenile offenders suspected of certain nonviolent crimes to participate in a pre-arrest diversion program in lieu of formal entry into the juvenile court system, as I've stated. Provide the victims of the juvenile crimes to be actively involved in the resolution of their cases. Reduce the rate of recidivism with young offenders, ensure young offenders are screened utilizing equitable protocols. Reduce the rate of juvenile offenders entering the formal system, and to give first-time, or fairly new to the world of criminal violation offenders, the opportunity to be held accountable for their actions by repairing the harm that they have caused. So, to speak shortly about, um, funding, the city has restored funding for two positions that exist in juvenile court services. They are positions existing in city-funded CHINs program, CHIN stands for Child in Need of Services Unit. Both petitions, or positions are intended to support the restorative justice program, which under the Code of Virginia must be centralized to juvenile court services. The Police Department has applied for and received a grant from the Promising Youth Opportunities Grant, administered by the Department of Criminal Justice Services. The Police Department had to be the applicant for this particular grant, and we were awarded sixty-four thousand dollars on the contingent that we will use those funds to support training for the city and, uh, school staff to become, uh, to become facilitators that can execute the restorative justice circles that will be a, a feature of the program. So, we were fortunate to receive that, um, award. As we consider, uh, training, we have learned that restorative justice is an ancient practice that's been passed down through generations, and has now become an emerging academic discipline. The center of that academic discipline appears to be at Eastern Mennonite University over in Harrisonburg, coincidentally, and we've learned a little bit about some of their academic programs. Their challenges to developing facilitators or locating those with the academic backgrounds and experiences in this practice. We are accustomed to hiring experts that have extensive academic records and academic backgrounds to help us, but it appears that the practical, or the traditional approaches to this render just about the same outcomes as far as training and giving people a proper perspective on how to pursue. So, our overarching theme is, as we focus on how to establish training, is to focus on soliciting training from experienced practitioners, with a preference for an academic perspective when possible. But, not a lot of academics out there that we think will have access to, um, from a practical perspective in hiring. So, we're considering the following strategies, strategies to develop our program and train our restorative justice practitioners. One is, we're looking at bringing in existing mediation services to give us a perspective on their experiences and help their, or utilize their professional experience to train our professionals who will execute the program. There are some mediation services that will offer training, or establish training for us to utilize and train our folks. The other, we are looking at police-based programs, and seeing what other police departments across the country are doing there. And then we're looking at other available restorative justice programs, more of a commercial approach. There are some commercial places and nonprofits out there that may have a good product for us to consider as well. We are in the point of the pro, uh, grant writing, or the grant process, where we're writing the RFP, the Request for Proposals, now. So, as we set those conditions for people to apply, we will consider all three of these and make those a part of what we intend to do. So, the program structure that we have in mind, and again, this is very general and likely or possible to change, but the general idea is that the restorative justice program will be a matter for the public schools and the court service units, and focus on the following. School discipline matters, which are non-criminal actions that violate school conduct codes. Restorative justice for school discipline matters may be corrective or preventative, with an emphasis on participatory and educational processes. These matters are addressed internally within the schools, and like I said, mediation program that you have currently is a component of restorative justice, so this may be just a small transition for the schools. Then, school-based criminal offenses, minor criminal offenses, that will be defined, and I'll show you a sample of that here in a, in a couple of seconds, as committed by students in the school setting. These are referred to the, uh, to the program through the school resource officer or police officer to the juvenile court services. So, that's an established process that we do all the time. This just gives us the additional option to deploy something other than a post-arrest alternative. So, the Alternative Accountability Program will be the community-focused program that we, uh, that we establish for offenses that occur outside of the school system. The eligible crimes, that I'm gonna give you the sample list of here, would apply to both programs, whether it's a restorative justice program or alternative accountability program. But, again, these are just the crimes that occur in the community that our non-SRL officers would act upon that may be suitable for consideration of the program. So, you'll see a list here, this is an accumulated list from different programs around the, um, country, just to give you a sample. I'll tell you now that one of the things that will be most important for us is to establish our own list of eligible crimes and eligible offenders that meet the values of our community. We don't want to enact someone else's strategies in a different environment. As our own, we want to make sure that we have good input and good consideration. And the Commonwealth Attorney, as I mentioned, is a key to helping us make these determinations. Again, the program structure and the Alternative Accountability Program, our goals are the same, accountability, school and community safety, and, uh, character development. And you'll see our processes to achieve those goals are exactly the same as the restorative justice program. To give you a, this is a bit of a problematic thing, and I'm hesitant to get into it too much, so we'll just, uh, keep it as simple. Programs do a program evaluation, right? There's no sense in investing in a program without trying to measure how effective you are at achieving your goals, and what is the impact on the community. So, when we look at how programs, different programs do this, we find different measures of what accounts for recidivism. Some programs look at future arrests, so does the child offend, go through the program, then re-offend at some point? Or, does the child offend, go through the program, and then have some contact, any contact with the juvenile justice system, again, at some point? And there are different variations about how long they watch the child after participation. So, it's hard really to say that there's an industry standard, we will develop our own. But we do see very low recidivism rates at the programs. We see one program that we have surveyed, reported as low as a one percent recidivism rate for their alternative accountability program, which is a community-based program, and as low as two percent in the restorative justice, uh, school-based system that deals with code of conduct and minor non-criminal viol, or minor criminal violations. So, you'll see, that's a pretty effective intervention, one that we think is pretty consistent. Maybe the numbers aren't that good, all over the place, but still, certainly more effective than the, um, than what we see with the post-arrest treatments that we see here in the state of Virginia. So, these are the communit, committee members that we have established. As I said, Dr. Parrott, Ms. Perkins, and I serve as the facilitators of the group. We've done the work to date to try to get us to this point, and this is our enthusiastic group of, uh, volunteers, or voluntold, as you might refer to them, who are helping us out. We've really been very pleasantly surprised with how well that's going so far. But you see a diversity of experience there, and even including, um, one community member at this point, with considerations for more growth as we go. So, our committee is working on developing a program structure, identifying goals and values, like I said, identifying hiring staff to support the program with the court service unit, identifying restorative justice facilitators, both city and, uh, schools. Our grant is intended to develop both sides of the equation. Developing workflows, program evaluation metrics, and policy. We all have to have clearly identified roles, so that we are prepared in advance for, uh, executing the program a way that's consistent and equitable, and then developing memorandums of understanding, which is always a lot of fun for us. So, that's the, uh, that's what I have prepared for you. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have. May also call upon Ms. Perkins to help me out a little bit.
Thank you, Officer, uh, so, Mrs. Malnick, and then Mrs. Holtz.
Yay, I'm giving you a standing ovation.
Yay, thank you, this is wonderful. Um, thank you for this, this makes me so happy, so glad to see this, so glad to see the collaboration between, for, between our school system and the city and the Police Department, and, more importantly, to see the committee members' names, so many of them we know, including a dear friend that I did not know was on this committee, and, and happy to see his name on here, and I'm just really pleased that, um, that this is happening, and I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, I don't give me any standing ovations, so I'll write that one down.
Go ahead, Mrs. Holtz.
Thank you, um, you mentioned that grant money has been given for training for Virginia Beach school staff. What, what particular group are you targeting? Or, I'm, I'm trying to get a, a feel of what this looks like. Would there be one facilitator in each school, or is there a group? How does it work?
So, I would say that we're, have yet to consider that thoroughly, but we plan to develop a number that can be used amongst the schools. I don't know that we would ever have enough to have trained for a facilitator in each school, but, uh, our clients or our, our children will be referred into the program when there's a qualifying event. And then, in my mind, our, our coordinators will assign a facilitator, a trained facilitator that maybe has experience or matches that situation, that can respond out and establish the restorative justice circle, have the impacted parties there, and go through the process. One thing I forgot to say is, it's an entirely voluntary program. So, we don't have any authority to, to compel someone to participate in the restorative justice system. My experience as a policeman, taking, uh, reports for many years with folks, when there's a minor crime committed, and you're dealing with a person who's impacted by that, the victim, in the conversation, they'll say, "Well, I'm just making a report, because, you know, I feel like you guys need to know, but, you know, it's probably a, a young person, and I don't really want anybody to get in trouble." So, this is an alternative that allows for someone to, you know, the victim to participate. If we find the offender, they can participate, and it avoids the, the consequences of that post-arrest, uh, record.
So, there's no new positions here, it's somebody that's already working for the school system? Well, how, how did they know about the program, and how did they apply?
So, we're not to that point yet. Our committee, we're gonna rely upon this, the larger committee, that's still not the largest committee, to kind of identify, schools will identify who they think would be good facilitators, and city side with Ms. Perkins would identify who in her domain over there would be good facilitators. We also see some programs where the cops are actually facilitators. So, one of the things that we'll consider, um, in the Police Department is whether or not that's appropriate for us to have our officers in there, or maintain the clarity of our role, just to be the gatekeeper to the system.
Okay, we have a few more in the queue that we'll try, that we'll get, try to get to, Mrs. Manning and Mrs. Weems?
Yeah, I'll try to be quick. Well, first of all, you know, I think we have-
Yeah, I'll try to be quick. Well, first of all, you know, I think we have top-notch Police Department. We're so fortunate, best in the nation, in my opinion. So, thank you. Having the support of the Police Department for this effort really means a lot to me. So, restorative justice can have many different meanings depending on who you ask around the nation. People apply it in different ways, and so I think it's important that we define what that is, and I think you've done that in your presentation. Just have a couple of questions. School-based criminal offenses, it says minor criminal offenses. Are those the offenses that you list on, on the next slide where it says program structure, the Alternative Accountability Program, assault misdemeanor only, are those the offenses that you're spelling out?
So, we're not ready to spell out any specific offenses for Virginia Beach yet. All I'm doing is giving you an example of some of the offenses that have been identified in other jurisdictions. We want to start from zero and figure that out for ourselves with the help of our criminal justice partners, the Commonwealth Attorney, Juvenile Court Services. We have a committee member who's provided us some insight into what type of school discipline, things are most commonly encountered, and from that, we think we could identify the things that we're comfortable with as being eligible for the program here. So, this is going to be probably some of the most difficult work that we do to match the values of the community. You know, this is a diverse community with a lot of opinions. You guys certainly can appreciate that. So, we're not going to get 100%, but we want to have an agreeable list that we can say upfront there. So, that's, that work starts, has already started. We reconvene on this Thursday to discuss it in greater depth.
So, that's in collaboration with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Police Department will help determine what the definition of minor offenses-
Right. We're definitely looking at, you know, misdemeanor type of offenses, offenses against order, minor larceny things, that kind of stuff. Nothing that would rise to the felony. I don't, I don't think that's going to be on the-
Okay. Would, how would we, I mean, when will the public find out what those offenses are that will, that will be considered for it? Is that something that's going to be publicized?
Yes, it'll be a part of our program. We want to be transparent and upfront with the public. Once our program is established, you know, there'll be publication that'll notify the public in general on a website. Here's how, here's what it is, here's how it works, here are the conditions to participate, here's what types of crimes and what types of offenders are eligible, and this, these are our goals and this is our successes. So, I anticipate that you'll see a list that's collaboratively established based on what we've encountered mostly, and again, if a person becomes involved and they do not want to participate because they think that a court alternative is something that's more appropriate because of the nature of the offense or the circumstances, they don't have to participate in this. It's just one of the options. We'll listen to the parents, we'll listen to the victims, we'll listen to everybody.
Okay.
Offering them up, an alternative.
Thank you so much.
Yes ma'am.
All right, so we'll wrap up with Mrs. Wiens and Ms. Owens.
Yes, thank you so much. Nice to see you. Nice to see you again, too. Yeah, I guess this is just kind of for later after y'all meet, because I, I know we have the mediation already within the school system, so I'm not sure how this differs from that, if it's just an add-on, how, how it would actually look in the schools versus what we already have with mediation. So, I just want to be able to kind of find out what that looks like, so I guess that'll be later.
Yes ma'am, I think so. We have some, we've had some preliminary conversations about it, but, you know, a little bit outside of my screen.
Okay, well, thank you so much for, for your hard work, and I'm looking forward to finding out more. Thank you.
Ms. Owens.
And I will be brief. Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm very excited. I know this program is kind of in its infancy for our city, though it has lots of other places where it's been successful, and I'm, I'm excited to see it grow. I'm excited at the, the names of the committee members as well. I am familiar with many of them, and I'm excited with the idea that not only does it offer another alternative to help reduce the school-to-prison pipeline situations that we have, it also can provide some really trauma-informed alternatives for victims that, I don't know that people always recognize how difficult the testifying process can be for victims, particularly child victims, and if this gives an opportunity for them to have kind of that restorative justice, but to, to work with the, not work with the offender, but to be made whole again, if you will, with whatever their situation that they encountered without having to do the, the testifying and hopefully ending in a better place with whoever the person was. That really can help just the general atmosphere and environment for our schools and, and help that victim to come to a more complete healing in their process. So, I'm, I'm just very excited that this has a lot of, a lot of room to grow and to have good outcomes. So, thank you.
Thank you ma'am. We have that in common. The programs that we've surveyed, it's been very, very clear that this is as beneficial for the victim because it occurs in a setting where that's familiar. It's not the formalities of courtroom, it's not, you know, the questioning, the direct and the cross-examining, so it's much more meaningful, much more impactful for the victim as well.
All right, so as a wrap-up, I do want to recognize Ms. Perkins. Thank you for being here today, representing juvenile justice, and we're, we're very grateful to you and to you Deputy Chief, and we, we look forward to seeing this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, honored to present.
So, this workshop is now adjourned, and we will reconvene in here at 6 o'clock.